Call this May 20, 2024, meeting of the Slovenia Board of Education to order. Adam, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Lavalette?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Motley, I believe we are with you for the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. Can everyone hear me out there? Let's go a little better. Hello? Can everyone hear me? Yes? Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to have a nice crowd before us on this Monday evening where you could be outside enjoying the sunshine and the warm, early summer weather, but we have many important things to share with you this evening and highlighting some students. But first, with my superintendent report, I would like to share that as a district and Board of Education, we continue our work on our master facilities plan. About two weeks ago, I might have mentioned at last week's meeting, but I don't think I did, that we actually had another subgroup committee which really had a focus on the impact of our preschool students and their increasing enrollment, in addition to the students who have special needs in the district and how we can better accommodate the requirements of each of their specific learning needs. We are thrilled to be making progress in the area of our master facilities plan. And actually, last Friday, I had the opportunity at the Slovenia Senior Center to hold a superintendent coffee where we provided community members with an status update, if you will, on the progress of our master facilities plan. We are in the throes of the plan right now. We're a little under halfway through the complete process. We envision that the process will take approximately 18 months to complete, at which time, we will come as a committee to make recommendations to the board about next steps and really addressing the footprint of our facilities in Slovenia, more specifically, not only for the next five years, but the next five, 10, and 15 years, and how we can better accommodate the growth across the district. As many of you know that are here tonight or may be tuning in at a later time, that we have a lot of growth and construction taking place here on the west end of town, specifically the southwest end of town, and we're making all efforts to what we can do to make sure that we are proactive in our decision-making in regards to how we accommodate the anticipated increase in enrollment. So stay tuned. Lots and lots of information will be coming your way. I know that we will be breaking for a summer break here in a week or so. Some of the work will slow down, but nevertheless, there will be work that continues. In addition, and one place I would like to highlight that summer work is, we would like to take the opportunity this summer to enhance our district website, more specifically with our webpage and how we can enhance the focus on the work of our Board of Education members, to increase transparency, to make the board page a little more user-friendly, to make it one, two, three click, if you will, in trying to access board meetings, board meeting agendas, and inform the public in regards to our next steps. We, as a superintendent, I will be working with our board members to gather their feedback and input in regards to how should this page look, what information should be on the page, and also keeping in account that we still also want to keep it personable so our community knows about each of our board members. So we're looking at enhancing our district webpage in regards to how we can be more transparent with our community members and help the board be more transparent in their efforts to inform in regards to the master facilities or other board business. Also, we are nailing down the final details in regards to the Quarry Ridge development. If you tuned in about a month ago or were present for a work session, I brought it to the board's attention that we have a development along Brent Road called Quarry Ridge. Quarry Ridge is the only development that is actually north of Brent Road, past Centennial, that feeds into the Southview Theater pattern, which would include Central Trail, in addition to Timberstone and Southview High School. About a month ago, I did a brief presentation to our Board of Education, and in an effort to help them make a decision or allow me to make an informed recommendation about redistricting Quarry Ridge, that specific development, in order that it would now follow, like its neighbors, in the Northview Theater pattern, which would include Highland, McCord, and Northview High School. So we are continuing our work and doing our due diligence to make sure that we accommodate those families who may desire grandfathering, which means they are currently in our district, they are currently attending Central Trail, Timberstone, or Southview High School. My understanding is working with folks in Central Office, that it's about 11 to 13 students at this time where we will reach out to those families and let them know of their educational option. We've also worked with the developer to get his input, and we will continue to inform and also notify the Quarry Ridge residents who are there now and potentially in the future, as it will take us some time to redistrict, with those folks who are looking to build a home. If you're not familiar where Quarry Ridge is, it is actually right next door to Brent Crossing and behind Pace Setter Park. And with that being said, what we -- of course, sorry. We want to be able to provide our families with an educational option for grandfathering, but also be able to be proactive in relieving some of the enrollment stress or anticipated enrollment stress from the new communities that are out on the southwest end of town, more specifically River Tree and a couple of other developments that are online. So we, although we're winding down the school year, we are still quite busy in Slovenia schools. So that concludes my superintendent's report, unless anyone has anything else they would like to add or share.
Okay, then I think we can move to commendations, Dr. Motley.
This is the best part of the whole board meeting, no offense to our board members, but
We agree.
[laughing] We are going to take the opportunity to celebrate our very own, our Wildcats and Cougars. We have quite a few here tonight. We are going to, so folks in the audience know how this will proceed, we are going to recognize the students who are being commended tonight on our Board of Educate -- by our Board of Education. We have several National Merit Scholars, National Merit Commended Scholars, National Merit Scholarship Finalists, and we also have some athletes here tonight. So parents, we are going to call up the students, allow them an opportunity to receive a certificate, photo ops, of course, because so you can have your phones ready for that. And then at the end, we will then, I will recommend the board vote on the commendations, and then feel free, at that point in time, you don't need to hang around for the rest of the agenda. I know you want to. I know you do. It's a very important meeting, but we won't be offended if you leave. So with that, Ms. Lavalette, if you would join me at the podium? So we are going to recognize high school, the high school groups specifically by high school, okay? So we're going to start with Southview High School. We would like to commend by our Board of Education our National Merit Scholars. Today, we commend Fletcher Manachanda and Berice Sangavi. Come on up. Are they here?[569.32][569.32][applause] It's so good to see you again, Fletcher. How are you? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Photo op? Next, we will commend our National Merit Scholars, but commended scholars. We have Aiden Combs, Nick Mulliter, and Alex Passaro. Are they here this evening? All righty. And then we would also like to recommend for commendation for National Merit Scholarship Finalists, Kevin Chu and Jean Van Ziel, but I heard he goes by Pierre. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Pierre Grecht, okay. Thank you. Give them a round of applause. Next, we will recognize Northview High School Scholars. We have our National Merit Scholars. Congratulations to Tressel Holton and Emmeline Lewis. Congratulations, Tressel. Good to see you. Congratulations, Emmeline. Love your dress. Thank you. Next, we would like to recognize our Northview Wildcats, National Merit Scholarship Finalists. We have Olivia Ford, Lucy Hertz, and Tristan Swanstew. Are they here this evening? All righty. Well, congratulations to them anyway. They are well-deserved. Quite deserving. And next, we have our National Merit Commended Scholars. We have Sarista Chetapadiye, and we have Max Forker, Daniel Lavalette, and Mivri Vargis. Come on up. Congratulations. Absolutely, congratulations. Good to see you. Just saw you at the I Make a Difference Breakfast. Congratulations. Now on for our board commendations for our athletes. Tonight, we have the Southview Tennis Team here, our boys' tennis team, and they are being commended for earning the title of the NLL Championship for the Cardinal Division. So congratulations, boys. We're going to call your name up, and when we call your name, we're going to ask you to come on up for a photo op. So here we go. We have Isaac Vins, Landon Vins, Jasit Singh, Max Melonowski, Christian Faber, and Fletcher Machonda, as well as Kevin Chu. Come on up, boys. Casey Vins, coach, come on up. Last but not least, we are wanting to recognize, have a strong desire, and I'm recommending the board commendate Isaac Vins, get to come on back, Isaac, for being selected the NLL Player of the Year for the Boys Tennis Team Cardinal Division, and AJ, I think it's Zazza, hereby commended as being selected as Coach of the Year. Come back up, Coach. Zaza. Zaza, Coach Zaza, thank you. Ms. Lavalette, I am recommending that we approve item 3.1, recognition of achievement, as listed to, as listed in the board agenda for all of our Wildcats and Cougars who are here this evening or perhaps are not present.
Any comments? Congratulations, everyone.
Really proud of you.
Adam, can you call the roll?
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
So you are welcome to stay, or if you're here for commendations, or you may leave.
Do you want to stand or didn't stand next to me?
Now that you say that. He's just going through a stage. Oh, wow. We can Photoshop him next to you.
Okay, we are now at the portion of our agenda for public participation for items that are on the agenda.
I see none.
Okay. So then we're moving to the treasurer.
All right, thanks, guys. I'm going to start before we go into my agenda items tonight. I'm going to do a small presentation on our five-year forecast. That'll be one of the items that I'm asking for approval tonight. So switch over to my forecast here and go from there. So May is generally the time that we update our forecast. We have to do it twice a year, but the May forecast is generally just an update of current fiscal year with what we know for next year as an update as well. So not a lot of, this is normally a smaller presentation than I do in November. So I just want to kick off on where we're looking to finish for this fiscal year, so fiscal year 2024. We project to have a fund balance of just over $38 million. So this year, we will increase our fund balance by about $1.8 million. And put in perspective, in November, when I presented the forecast and that was approved, that we did it, I was projecting a $1.4 million fund balance. So just over $400,000 ahead of schedule, if you will, so a little bit better off by about $400,000, so. Snapshot of revenue for the year, again, nothing really changed in terms of the pie. We are, we've been hovering around 66%, 67% local-funded, and the primary, primarily, obviously, the next biggest chunk there is state funding at 28%. Our local taxes make up real estate and public utility, and then the 28% kind of falls in line with three buckets from the state. The general unrestricted funding from the state through the Fair School Funding Plan makes up the majority of state funding, and then we do get restricted state funds for our disadvantaged youth, our EL population, gifted and career tech make up that restricted money. And then the state shared property taxes is your homestead enrollback and property taxes that the state pays and they reimburse us. And then all of the revenue, primary, and I'll go into these a little bit more detail, but primarily tuition from other districts, special ed funding for court-placed students, and interest revenue, school fees, some Medicare reimbursements there as well. So that's the general makeup of the revenue. And then I kind of highlight three areas. So 67% of our income obviously comes from property taxes. This year, in Lucas County, there is going to be a full reappraisal on all of our residential values, and that'll be collection in 2025. So next fiscal year, we'll be half on an old rate, and then our February collections will be on the new rate. Across the state of Ohio, there's been significant property value increases. We have no control over those. That's not something the school gets involved in, but historically speaking, the last couple of years, there have been significant increases in appraised value. So I wanted to just throw that little graphic up there and kind of, as property values increase, that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to see a windfall of money. There's a House Bill 920, which is a reduction value. So all of our voted taxes, they get voted at X millage, well, as values go up, the effective rate of that collection goes down. So that's kind of that, the image up there. So values go up, our revenue stays relatively flat. We only see the increase on the inside millage, so that's a very small percentage. That's five mills, and our effective rate is in the 30s. So a very small percentage of our revenue can grow with the economy, if you will. So it's just something to keep in mind as we, as we look at our property values and our increase in revenue over the next five years, we're not going to see a significant increase in our property tax collections because of really House Bill 920. There is a chance, though, that as our values get higher, our income from a state of Ohio could actually go down in fiscal year '27, so in three school years. So as part of the state foundation funding formula is, takes into account median income and the appraised value and the assessed value of our community. So as values go up, the state accounts for that, and the formula that kind of says, in layman's terms, communities like ours has the ability to raise taxes easier than maybe communities with lower assessed values. So it's something to keep in mind. We, I did forecast in 2027 a negative $1.5 million from the state, and that is based on the current law, current funding formula. Now, generally speaking, that does not happen, but we don't know that because the state budget is every two years. So we're in the middle of the first year of the state budget, so we'll get a new budget in July 1 of 2025, which will allow us to understand what the next two years of the budget's going to look like then. But it's just important to note that I did forecast a small decrease in FY '27 because that's the way, that's where the funding formula is now. So it's, again, we'll work with our legislators. I've already had a conversation, and our lobbyists at the state level, OASBO, OSBA, will be fighting for, you know, those changes and not a decrease in revenue collections. The Fair School Funding Plan did get an additional phase in this year and updated inputs from 2022, so that did increase, that did, we did see a $3.2 million increase from the state. So that did help tremendously to balance our budget and was slightly higher than I anticipated a year ago, so. And then the last kind of big chunk in revenues, we did, I've been talking about this for a couple of years now, we have been seeing a great return on our investments, so we're getting about $2.1 million in our general fund for interest revenue this year, and I just, it's eye-opening, but I wanted to put it in perspective. In 2021, we only got $186,000. So that is another line item that has been helping balance our budget and increase to our fund balance in the general fund. That is not going to continue. All good things come to an end, but we do anticipate rate cuts in late 2025, early, late 2024, early 2025. And then as we potentially have to dip into some reserves, so as our fund balance decreases, return on investments decrease, we will see some revenue declines there, starting in fiscal year 2025. The other two line items that make up other revenue and total is about 5.5, but tuition from other districts is 1.1 million. That'll remain constant throughout the forecast. A lot of reimbursements for court-placed or foster-placed kids. Special ed, we get money from other districts, and that is what makes up that. Medicaid reimbursements, our staff does a phenomenal job of putting the extra work in and documenting the services we do provide, and we get some Medicaid reimbursements from that. And school fees are another large part of that line item for about 1.1 million. So those line items will remain consistent throughout the forecast. Expenses, again, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary here. We've been hovering around 82%, 84% of our general fund being personnel costs and salaries and benefits. Purchased services make up the next largest chunk there, and then supplies, capital outlay, some debt makes up the rest. Going to some salaries here, we are going to, we're reducing positions as possible through attrition, but not negatively impacting student outcomes and student opportunities. We have to increase some fun, or some staffing in preschool and special education next year. We're looking about, I believe, seven and a half positions there, but we are able to reduce about seven positions next year moving forward. So we're still going to be a net decrease in terms of staffing next year. Union agreements were in place till fiscal year '26, through fiscal year '26. We will bring it back some expenses next year in the general fund that we've utilized through ESAR. That's allowed us to save the general fund dollars the last couple of years. So those positions are going to come back to the general fund and are forecasted moving forward. Again, salaries will increase. Again, salaries will increase each year in the forecast through step, step increases and, and small raises, but it's, it's hard to determine just how many retirements we have every year and how many staff members move on. And every time, generally, every time a retirement happens, we bring in new staff at the lowest salary we can. So it generally saves about, between salaries and benefits, you're looking at, you know, 75 to 80,000. So we do, we're able to, to help offset those increases every year through, through that mechanism.
What is the 61%?
So that's 61% of our overall expenses.
But on the previous slide, it was...
That's salaries and benefits. So 61 and 23 equal.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, so. Benefits, you know, again, as salaries go up, our retirement benefits will increase at the same rate, so. And we talked about this, I believe, two meetings ago. We had approval for a new broker. We are going to do a health insurance deep dive. We have our renewal coming up this year, so we're going to get out for bid for new carriers, look at, you know, no, no stone unturned, and, and look at any way we can save money in health insurance. So that is not factored in. It's just unknown at this time. So that will be one area that we're hoping that we can find some significant savings moving forward. Purchase services, which is about 7% of our, our general fund, utilities, special education costs, college credit plus, nursing services and insurance make up the bulk of that. And I believe, we factored in about 5% increase moving forward, which we're seeing larger increases than that in utilities and potentially our, our property and casualty insurance this year. But, but overall, we're looking at 5%. Materials and supplies is 5% of, of our fund, of our general fund expenses. This is the, obviously, the bulk of, is instructional supplies and software. We have bus fuel in there, maintenance and custodial supplies and bus parts. Materials and parts there make up a lot. We do have an aging fleet, but our mechanics do a phenomenal job of, of keeping our roughly 80, 90 buses en route every day, so. So this kind of puts it all together. Next year, we're looking at, so that'd be fiscal year 25, pretty much balanced budget there, around negative 200,000 is what I'm projecting as of now. But I will do, obviously, in November, I do a very detailed analysis and try to come within, you know, you know, a couple hundred thousand of a $100 million budget. It's pretty much balanced there, so. But then that, with no changes, again, we're, we're looking at a deep dive this summer, looking at every aspect of our, our business and our operations. But as of now, 2026, we're looking at a negative 4.3, 4.4 million deficit in FY26, which we do have a $38 million carryover to, to handle that. And then it's hard to forecast, you know, four or five years out, you know, with a state budget only every, every two years. But that does, that net loss in 2028 is a little over 13 million there. So the right graph there is our projected fund balance, which ending this year will be about $38 million. And then it's, as we see now, FY28 will be just over 10 million. So this just gives a kind of perspective on what I'm, what we're looking at for revenue. Historically, we've seen a, a revenue change of just under, you know, or just over a half percent, 0.66%, but I am projecting about an average of 1.26% in revenue change. And then expenses, historically, just over 1%, but I am factoring in a 4.69% increase moving forward with expenses. You know, our instructional related items, you know, bus fuel, utilities, and just, you know, staffing levels, not knowing where we are every single year with staffing, it's hard to project five years out where we are staffing. So we use a lot of trends, in, in short term trends in that, and that equated to about 4.69% increase in the expense side of things. And then just kind of, you know, summed it all together with revenues and expenses and then the net there. So that's, you know, the detail of FY25, I mentioned about a $200,000 decrease to our fund balance, which in November, that forecast, I forecasted 2.5 million deficit in FY25. So we, we are, we are significantly better off now than we were. And a lot of that is kind of timing with revenue. We had a collection rate percentage of our, of our tax collections in February of '24, which is a little, was a little bit lower than normal. So we'll catch that back and, back up in FY25, so that, that equated for, for a lot of the difference between the 2.5 and the 2 there, so. Any questions? I have to submit this by May 31st, but happy to answer any questions.
Very thorough, thank you.
No, yes, it's very thorough. So, under the new, the state, the funding law, even though taxes may be increased, we'll still, we'll collect the increased taxes...
Only on the inside...
On the property.
On the property, but only on the inside millage. Because as rates go up, the effective rate of the tax will go down.
So, okay, so we'll collect that, but then our state, our state funding will go down...
Potentially in FY27. Now, there's, they've historically always had a guarantee, meaning no school would receive less than they did the year before. And to, you know, I talked to somebody actually at the Department of Workforce and Development today about this, and, you know, there's no guarantee, if you will, but it, it historically has always happened, you know? Because our enrollment's not going to change. So a lot of times when they look at guarantees, they look at, okay, is a school significantly decreased, having a decrease in enrollment where they, where funding, a decrease in funding would make sense, we're actually, we're going the other way, right? We're, we're anticipating small increases, you know, 1% to 2% over the next 10 years. So we, we don't, we're not going to have the need for a decrease because our enrollment's still there. And they do fund basically per kid now, so it's, it's not going to, there's not going to be a decrease that will be needed there for student enrollment.
Thank you.
All right, switch back to the agenda here. So 5.1, minutes of previous meetings. Jill, you're not in attendance, so if we could do that as a standalone and then present 5.2 and beyond with consent, that'd be great.
I'll move approval on 5.1.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Abstain.
Thank you. So I ask consent, agenda items 5.2 to 5.7.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 5.2 through 5.7.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we are with you, Dr. Motley.
Thank you, Ms. Levela. I would like to recommend item 6.1, the acceptance of gifts. We had a generous coffee donation valued at approximately $200 for our career tech stakeholder breakfast held on May 7th of this year.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Comments or questions?
It was Starbucks.
Thank you.
Good, fancy.
Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
I would like to recommend item 6.2, which is the appointment of Desiree Eitzen as Assistant Principal for Student Services of Northview High School for a term of two years, beginning August 1, 2024, through July of 2026. And she will be paid at the introductory level of the administrative salary schedule.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
I have comments.
Comments?
I have lots of comments. So I've known Deb for a couple of years now, but I really welcomed the opportunity to meet with her last week as part of her final interview. And I learned quite a few amazing things. One, her student teaching was held in Ghana, if I recall. Is that correct? Ghana, not like down in Ohio, Ghana, but Ghana. Didn't realize that about her, and that's something special because that's where she really, I think, formed her fabric for helping students and understanding the diverse needs of students, especially when some of those needs were at a very basic level. She brings a passion for supporting students and staff. She also played basketball, let me get this right, at Central Michigan, was on the women's basketball team. She's earned her Master's of Science degree at Walden University, and this month will wrap up her university, or wrap up at the University of Finley, her administrative licensure. She has been a teacher here since 2015. I believe she's taught middle school and high school. She's also served as our Assistant Athletic Director since 2021, and she also taught at Washington local schools. But her dream job has been here in Slovenia, and it is an honor to have her join our administrative team, not only because of her passion for helping students and supporting staff, and a strong desire for a value of education and what education can do to change the trajectory of an individual child's life. She really spoke about removing obstacles and challenges and forging a path forward so all students can be successful. We're looking forward to her being able to cast a bigger net. She already cast a net within Northview. Students go to her room, and sometimes they're not her students, but they feel comfortable, and she brings a sense of belonging to, to the environment. So we are thrilled to recommend Des for a position as an administrator here in Slovenia Schools.
Adam, call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Congratulations, Des.
Congratulations, Des. Yay. I don't know if you want to say a few words, or if you're good, if you wanted to say a few words, Des, or...
You could just thumbs up.
Thumbs up would be good. Okay.
You're never lost a word.
Oh, that's great.
Um, next, I, we took the vote, right? Okay. All right. Moving on to item 6.3, I recommend the approval of administrative contracts as listed.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend the approval of item 6.4, the Slovenia Schools Elementary Handbook.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.5, the Junior High Schools Student Handbook for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend items, oops, I recommend item 6.6, the High School Student Handbook Changes for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.7, Elementary School Fees for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.8, the Approval of Junior High School Fees for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes. Thank you. I recommend item 6.9 for the High School and Career Tech Fees for the 24-25 school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 6.10, or 6.10, wow, 6.10, the Policy on Crowdfunding for a First Read. No action will be taken this evening, but discussion, and we welcome any comments or thoughts or concerns regarding the policy.
You're not looking for a vote?
No.
No. First read.
Okay, well, I have a few concerns that the language of the policy might inadvertently be precluding things that we might want to allow and allowing things that we might not want to allow. And I guess I think we would need to have a conversation about, you know, what we, we want, what we want to convey in this policy. So one of my concerns is the, the use of, I can't say it verbatim, but there's a Facebook page in Slovenia called Free...
Free Stuff.
Free Stuff in Slovenia, and, except not exactly stuff. And I personally, from my perspective at least, I, I think that people in our district should feel free to try to acquire free stuff from that website for purposes of using it in their classrooms. And I don't want that to be viewed as crowdfunding. I'm not sure if it is or it isn't. It's just the language is really vague. I guess that's a concern that I had. My other concern was, let's see, that the second to last paragraph, which I know is intended to permit the use of, like, signup genius for classroom parties, those kinds of things, but really language saying that you can, that it's not intended to prohibit using the web, web-based platforms to support, directed to parents to support activities could be almost anything. I feel like an activity at school is pretty broad. One possible solution that occurred to me is, and I would be modifying the policy slightly so that crowd, crowdfunding is permitted in ways that are specifically articulated in the administrative policy, where Dr. Motley or the administration could specify certain types of specific venues that might be appropriate to use at, obviously, at the administration's discretion, because that would be an administrative policy, but would, beyond that, require approval of the superintendent with the approval and upon recommendation of the principal. So basically, it would just be adding a small clause to the third paragraph. Again, I'm not sure that that's the way to go. I'm just, I don't want to be unduly limiting in what people are able to do, but my concern is mainly that families don't feel pressured to donate to things when they're not in the, when they're, when they're not interested in doing that, so.
So I, and Tammy shared some of these concerns with me today, and, and my response, or my thought is that, and I think that she may be right in terms of that, this policy is not intended to restrict the activities. We may be able to just scratch that in, because nothing in this, this, this policy says, this is what crowdfunding is, and you can do it upon approval of the principal and the superintendent. is what crowdfunding is, and you can do it upon approval of the principal and the superintendent, and then, and it says administrative guidelines. So, the understanding is, is that you can't just go do it on your own, it has to get approved. So that's, so I think at the end where we say it's not intended to restrict, well, we're not restricting anything. We're saying, so I definitely think, and you and I had talked about how, well, gosh, we don't want to stop signup genius, but that can be handled in the administrative guidelines, I think.
You basically want to stop at GoFundMe.
We do. But I also, I mean, from my perspective, and maybe some of you don't share this, my concern is, and like, tonight on our agenda, we had a $200 donation of coffee and that we approved, and I've seen us approve much less, hair ties for the, I mean, that were probably worth $25. I mean, we approve these small things, and I don't think that, I don't know how we, as on a policy level, draw a distinction between somebody going to the free site saying, hey, I need markers for my classroom, or what we're doing, what we're approving through this official channel. So, I think we need to streamline it all through the administrative guidelines. And the other, you know, like with Tammy's example, for instance, this week, and not to single anybody out, because I don't think she was anything wrong, but we had a teacher post, hey, I need an item on the free...
Stuff.
Stuff page. She posted, you know, I need a free item, and, and for my classroom. And so, I was, I was thinking, well, gosh, would this be in viol, I have no problem with what she's doing, by the way, but would this violate our current policy? And I think the answer to that is, well, it depends on what's in the administrative guidelines. And, but I also think there's something we need to be mindful of, which is the optics of another type of post where it looks like we're begging, or we're, we're not putting ourselves in the best light, like, look at this crappy thing in our classroom, somebody help us replace that. That's, that's not the optics I think I want out there. You know, I think there's other avenues to get big items or to better the experience of our students through the foundation, parent orgs, principals fund, all these other things, and then, and then, then maybe we say, okay, we need more, let's, now you can crowdfund on this site, and the administrative guidelines will have a crowdfunding thing. I don't want to stop people from realistically being able to donate tissues and things for their classroom. I don't think any of us do. But we have to be able to have a policy that says, there's got to be guidelines when we go out and ask for stuff, and we have to control it. And in that situation with the free site, if somebody would have donated that item to the teacher, that would have been her item. Was she going to bring it in and was it going to belong to the school? Is it going to belong to her? She takes it home at the end of the year? I don't know. Either way is fine with me. But I, I think it just needs to be something that we corral, I guess. So, those are my thoughts.
And to chime in and go along with that, not only just the administrative guidelines, but the forms that fall within our board docs that aren't board-approved, but we were, we have a plan form that a teacher would need to fill out specifying exactly what they were using it for, have they expended all of their resources such as parents' clubs, booster clubs, as well as principals' 18 accounts. First step would be principal's approval, and then the second step would be superintendent and/or her designated to approve even allowing a crowdfunding piece to go on, online. So, there is, there are some steps involved in that we would use as well.
One of the things I was wondering, I mean, could you have an administrative guideline where, look, these things are always okay. You don't have to seek approval, and I don't know what those items are, whether it's signup genius, or, you know, asking for donations for the Christmas party, you know, those things are always, that's fine.
Consumables was the word Julie came up with.
Right, consumables, that's good, yeah.
Yeah, but sometimes they're not necessarily, it could be some crafts because they're making something, or, you know, but, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
And I don't know if it's a dollar amount is the distinction, you know, or if you want to, like, I can't stop a teacher or an administrator or anybody from going onto a Facebook free site and asking for stuff. Just don't do it in our, in the school's name unless you get approval, kind of thing. I, I don't know. Or if it's an item you plan to leave at the school or become part of the school, it needs to get approved. I guess I don't want teachers to have to put in a request form every time they want to ask for...
And I think that's it, because we don't want to be overly burdensome to teachers who are only trying to...
And I don't want to be...
...put things in their classrooms and go to students. So, I think having a list of, these things are always allowed. The signup genius, like, if this is for my fourth grade class, or my, you know, drama club or band, and it's going out to those parents, like, that is one thing within their own, you know, that community. I think it's kind of like when you're going out into...
I agree.
...internet world is maybe the...
That's where we, I think we need to see it. If, if it's going out into the internet public, it needs to be...
Yeah, or somebody from Ghana might be donating.
Or that, or if it's compared to needing a dozen cookies for a holiday celebration versus something that's...
Which is always okay.
Yes.
Right.
Versus something that is going to be a new piece of furniture that's going to be school property in that classroom.
Or a piece of equipment.
Or a piece of equipment, and that's, and that makes sense.
Because here's the thing, and I'm not trying, and I don't, right, yeah. I don't want to be overly burdensome for teachers, but if, you know, if somebody does donate a toaster, you know, does, and that toaster's going to be in our building, we're responsible for it. If that toaster burnt the building down, we're responsible for it. I'm not saying I don't want her to seek out, because God knows, you know, we always want the benefit of, of getting things without having to pay for them.
Right.
But I just want it to be done in a, or in a, in a controlled way, so we control it, and, but I, yeah, I don't want to burden teachers.
I mean, that wouldn't be any different if she got the free toaster on the free Facebook site, or she just brought hers from home.
Right.
Right, there's no difference. And to me, she's getting a free toaster on Facebook site.
It is, except that, and I agree with that 100%, but the difference is, I fear, is that going out on the, what, how do we then draw a line policy-wise between going out there for a toaster and going out there for a couch, you know, and the optics of that, you know, in the community, oh, they're, they're begging for furniture, and I, I don't know. I just worry about the optics.
It's tricky.
Do we have examples from other districts?
They use the Neola.
Not good ones.
They use the Neola, and the Neola is terrible. I mean, that's like part of the Neola, but like, the Neola didn't even specify district personnel. It was just very, it's just very, and it had two separate definitions of crowdfunding, and it was confusing, and, yeah, I look too.
Obviously, this is a very complicated issue, because we've been talking about it for a long time, but would we be better off, maybe, instead of trying to define what we're going to allow, maybe define what we don't want? Would that be easier?
I don't think so. Because I think we, I mean, just my perspective, it's too hard to, I, I think they, the administration needs to have some leeway to say, okay, this is fine, and, oh, no, this is too much. And I don't, because I think it's, I don't know, or at least to say, hey, have we tried other options first before we crowdfund.
I mean, I think your major crowdfunding websites are Donors Choose, Amazon Wishlist, and GoFundMe, and then like, what's, what's your thought on those? Those are the, maybe the three we're trying not to allow, or?
I just, I don't even know if it's the particular platform that worries me so much as...
Because those always change.
Right. It's, but, I mean, yes, for sure, the Donors Choose, I want that to be regulated for sure. You know, the concern with the Amazon Wishlist is, are we asking for consumables for the students, or are we asking for education materials? You know, I, I worry about...
Yeah, and I think sometimes it's, I've seen this a lot lately, is it's like a new teacher just starting, and they're building their classroom, and they're not maybe necessar, I mean, that's just, you just put it out there, hey, I have my first classroom, I got my first job, and you're asking for things, and your friends are giving it to you. That's not necessarily like anybody in internet land giving it to you. Your friends and family doing it. So, to me, that's a little different.
I agree, and I have teacher friends that have done that, that have said, oh, my gosh, I've got a new classroom this year, I'm looking for something. I gave a teacher friend a couch. Yeah, here, use this. But that was her on her private Facebook page.
Right.
So, I think to your point, Greg, what we also need to look at is our social media policy, and how we're, what we're allowing to go out in social media.
I have, I have a copy of a district that's next door, that I will be bringing forward for a starting point.
Yes. Yeah, I think, yeah.
I mean, I think the signup genius could be handled in administrative policy and just say, you know, items that are going to be used, you know, when they come in, whether it's crafts, food, or, you know, whatever, it's not a...
And this doesn't apply to parent orgs at all.
Something that wouldn't be appreciated.
Or boosters, or, you know, any of those support organizations.
And I think one of the critical pieces of any policy is providing professional development, working with our staff, making sure they understand the policy, because many folks, I'll just say, all teachers are coming from a place of, hey, I need this, and how can I get it in an inexpensive way to benefit my classroom? They're not coming with trying to circumvent or anything like that. But to your point, if someone asks for a couch, and a couch gets delivered to the classroom, there are, and that has happened, I think, bunk beds, and couches, and picnic tables, and things of that nature, we need to also think about the impact it has long-term. In some instances, when a teacher moves from one classroom to another, the couch gets left behind sometimes, then we end up throwing it away, and then it's, it's another avenue, but also then it becomes property of the district if it's a donation. And I'm not sure if our educators understand all the nuances to the policy, but it's up to us to provide the information to our administrators and to our teachers. And also, on another note, I think, once we are able to couple our social media policy, I think it will help us. We, I'll just be candid, as superintendent of the district, I do not want our taxpayers thinking that we are not providing teachers with the educational supports they need to have a classroom function the way that they would like it to function, to optimize teaching and learning. I want our taxpayers and our educators to know that we want to support them in the, within our means, but we would like to at least have the opportunity to do that before it can give the optics of, which you've spoken to, Kim, of we are not providing that teacher with a couch, or with a bookshelf, or sometimes we don't know, sometimes it may be a violation of fire code, why we don't know. But even those are things we need to be able to have an opportunity to insert ourselves and say, hey, listen, I have a couch, it's more of a love seat, better suited for the classroom, and I'll donate it. It may be someone in the building that has something, but give us an opportunity to support our teachers, because what I don't want our taxpayers to think is that a teacher or educator has no other recourse but to go and ask on a website.
And, and to be clear, I mean, right now, our existing policy is no crowdfunding. So, this is actually opening up to say, okay, well...
That's a good point. That's a very good point.
We're trying to open it up and say, okay, in some situations, of course, our existing policy, nobody understands what the heck crowdfunding is.
It's a really...
Tammy and I have been debating it for about two years now. What is crowdfunding? That's crowdfunding. No, that's crowdfunding.
I mean, crowdfunding under our policy, I think I have a concept of what it means in the real world.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, what does it mean?
Yeah, and I think the intent was the signup genius, that all that was allowed, because that's not really crowdfunding. I mean, I don't think of that as crowdfunding. I think of that, the Donors' Choice or whatever, where you're casting a wide net to try to get...
Trying to get small amounts of money, or from a lot of people to fund...
Right, from strangers, right?
Right.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That to me is crowdfunding.
But, but I, under our policy, that may have been, that may be crowdfunding, because the policy is so poorly written, and it's a Neola policy, so none of us are going to take credit for that, but, anyway, and I've read, I mean, I've read the policy, you talk about providing training on it, I'm not, still not sure what it says and what it means in some places.
Well, and I would mean the revised policies so that folks have a common definition, because just as our board is struggling in some regard to what is it, we need to share once we determine what it is with our educators that the policy has changed and it exists. Right now, you're right, no one, yeah, it's not ideal.
Have, have we had some issues in the past?
No, not really.
No, but we had... Okay, what I was thinking was if there, if there were, maybe that would be a place to start, what was the issue, and how could we have avoided it?
I, I think there...
But if we haven't, any examples of it?
I think that the current policy, it's a little unclear on who it applies to. So, in that regard, I think maybe there are issues, because it could be interpreted as applying to support organizations, boosters, and, and I, I don't think that's anybody here's intent. So, I, I think that deaf point at least needs to be clarified.
And I think there were requests, I feel like, from teachers, at some point last year, I remember it came up, as something they were interested in revisiting, opening it up to, and, and so this is an attempt to do that. Did, was this something that came up in LMRC?
It was in LMRC.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's always said no, and like Tammy says, does that, does that apply to boosters?
Right.
Parent club, the other, Bible 1C3s, that was never the intent, but it's a, it's a poorly written policy we have in place now, but as Kim said, the teachers want this opportunity to, to take advantage of it if and when needed.
So, then we'll just maybe tweak a little bit and do a second read, if anybody...
Yep. Okay.
Good.
Sounds good.
Okay, anyone else? All right. I guess we're with you, Mr. Tiber.
Thank you. I'm recommending items 7.1 through 7.4 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 are our Licensed Retire Rehires. So, I want to both congratulate and welcome back Susan Crandall, Mike Sernikowski, Mark Jump, and Sarah Nowicki, all with wonderful careers here in Savaney.
And this will save us about $160,000.
Who is that?
Said the treasurer.
Thank you very much.
7.2 is Licensed Extra Duty. 7.3 are Licensed Contract Recommendations. 7.4 is Licensed Increase in Position.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 7.1 through 7.4.
Second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I would recommend items 8.1 through 8.5. 8.1 is Classified Contract Non-Renewal. 8.2 are Some Classified Summer Positions. 8.3, Classified New Hires. 8.4 is Classified Retirement. Want to thank Vicky Beard for her years of service to Savaney Schools. And 8.5 is Classified Resignation.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1 through 8.5.
Second.
Comments or questions?
It's just going to be weird not to get any emails from Vicky Beard.
I know. Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I would recommend items 9.1 and 9.2 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1 are Supplemental Positions for the 24-25 School Year, and 9.2, we are volunteers.
Volunteers.
Yeah. 9.2, Athletic Volunteers for the 24-25 School Year.
I'll move for approval on a consent agenda basis, items 9.1 and 9.2.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Julie?
Abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're on board reports. Greg, do you have anything?
Oh. I'll keep it short. I, was it a CIC meeting early in April? I don't think there was anything major, I mean, everybody already knows right now that trustee Crandall's stepping down, so they're taking applications for that position. We had a finance meeting for the facilities master plan, and I meant to get these from Adam, and I forgot, there was a couple really good slides about growth in our buildings and maintenance versus replacement costs. They were pretty eye-opening for me. Like I said, I meant to get copies of them and kind of distribute them, I forgot. So, if anyone's interested in that, I'll get some copies from Adam and send it out, but it was good information. We had a variance meeting in, earlier this month, for our Northview project, for the variance for the restrooms, which we got granted. Didn't quite get the timeline that we wanted, but we got the variance granted, so that was good. So, it gives us a little bit of time to figure that out. And then we had, Tammy and I had a finance committee meeting a few days ago, and we just kind of reviewed the forecast. That's all I got.
Julie? I had a foundation meeting, I'm trying to look if there's anything, I saved the date on the Athletic Fall of Fame, which will be like, the game will be 8:23, the Northview-Southview game, and the event is on the 24th. Greg Lamanna and Casey Nowicki are stepping off of the foundation board, and so they're looking for new members. There are eight reunions this summer, so that's exciting. I did my public records training, three hours of it, it was awesome. So, I did get that done, that's done. I went to the Northview Art Show, which was fantastic. I mean, it was really, really, really great. Also went to so many prevention lines, but you were there, right? So, I'm going to leave that one for you. And got to go to the preschool special ed planning, master facilities planning meeting, and that was interesting. That's all.
Okay, Jill?
The only thing I really have is the SCS, Slovenia Community Services, has hired a new executive director. Sophia Lloyd's last day was May 10th, and we hired Maria Gagnon as our new executive director. She is starting soon, in June. She had an Appalachian hike scheduled, and she wanted to go hiking, so.
Great.
The only thing I have is just kind of reiterating what Dr. Moly said during her superintendent report, looking at the, on the communications side of things, looking at how our board page on the website can be more instructive to the public. It's kind of, I mean, you go to the front, and it's our bios, and we're great and all, but I think the focus should be, what is, what does the board do? When do we meet? How do we function? Look at Perrysburg's board page, if you get a sense of, of what I'm talking about, not, it's a good blueprint of what I'm thinking as far as, go to the page, learn about the board, there's a button, and Perrysburg doesn't have this, but what I'd like to see is, here's a YouTube button where you can watch our meetings, here's a button where you can find board docs. Right now, those things are there, but they're kind of buried and not prominent, and if you're not trying, or you don't know what that is, you're not going to go there. I just want our agenda to be a little bit more, I've had some conversations online, you may have seen, about transparency and making our, what we're doing accessible, because I think what we are doing is very accessible, but is it easily accessible? I want to, I want to make it a little bit more, you know, go to the page, hit a few buttons, and get the information you want. So, that was just the thinking there, so hopefully we roll out something to show everyone here in the next few months.
You know, as you guys talk through that, if you wanted, I can always make the minutes easier, you know, that's a PDF link that just goes right to the minutes, not having to log into board docs.
Right.
To do that. Like, there's things that I could help with in regards to that.
And the other thing, I, from a communications perspective, and Amy and I have talked about this, is updating our photograph, because it's a little old, and maybe doing something outside in front of 4747, or in front of the new stadium, or in some district location outside with nice light, taking a good photograph for our new district digest picture, because it's, it's been going on for a while now, so. That's all I got.
Greg?
Thank you. Along the lines of what you were discussing, Kim, I, I've been adding our meeting agenda to our board Facebook page for the, just the last two meetings. I finally figured out how to get the correct link in there so that it went somewhere. But our board Facebook page also has our old logo, and.
And I, I've looked at that, but I.
I can't figure out how to change it.
I know how to change it, I don't know what to change it with, because otherwise we look exactly like the Slovenia schools page. So, what is the logo going to be? We have the same logo.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we could have it be the same logo, but it just looks confusing. So, maybe we'll put our new profile pic there.
That would be nice. And since Julie gave me the Slovenia Prevention Alliance meeting to discuss, the fall fundraiser this year is going to be pickleball for prevention, which I think is going to be, what did they say, 12 teams?
Yes.
Yes. So, it'll be relatively small, but they're looking forward to it, and I don't know if a date's been set yet, but my understanding was it had not.
No, they're still, because they're working with Slovenia Rack, who's giving us the.
It's expected to be a Saturday in September.
Yes.
And the Slovenia Prevention Alliance will be staffing the Dana Open concession stand, so they're looking for volunteers the week of July 15 through 21st.
So, sign up.
And, let me think, oh, and also, they were going to present at the meeting last week, which they did, so that was fun. Okay, now we are at public participation for non-agenda items. Seeing none, I will.
Are you sure? You've been here a long time?
We were hoping that's what you were staying for. I'll move, we go into executive session for purposes of considering the purchase or sale of public property.
So, move.
Second.
Adam, can you call the roll?
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
And we will not be taking action after the meeting.